Good morning, Chairman, we're now live.
Good morning, thank you very much, welcome to everybody on the committee and some new faces. First of all, I'd like to start with a welcome to one of our new members, Tom Hodgson, who you'll see there, sitting there over in the middle. Tom's joined us as a new academy member and was very successful on the interview process. Hope you enjoy the meeting, Tom, and don't be afraid to ask questions because that's what we do. Thanks very much. Paula Ashley Morris, councillor Paula Ashley Morris, maybe got holed up in traffic, so hopefully she'll be here, but she's one of the new councillor members on the committee. I'd also like to say a couple of farewells as well, first of all to councillor Bob Waller. Bob has decided to stand down at the next election, so unfortunately we're going to lose Bob. I'd like to thank you very much, Bob, for all you've done in the committee over the past few years, so many thanks indeed, and hopefully you'll find us a new replacement. Thank you very much. And I'm very sad to say that it's our independent advisers' very last meeting. Peter Jones, Peter, you've been wonderful for us, and many thanks indeed for everything you've done. I'm glad that you and I have always seen eye to eye on finance. And that's true, actually. So many thanks indeed, Peter, and look forward to your final report as well. Thank you. Apologies for absence, Tom?
Thank you, Chairman, we have apologies from councillor Mike Thompson.
Yes, unfortunately Mike's still a little bit unwell, but I'm sure he'll be back with us at the next one. Declarations of members' interests, could I have a show of hands of members' interests? I'll start with Steve Larter.
Thank you, Chairman, declaring an interest as an active and deferred member of the pension fund.
Thank you, Steve. Councillor Bob Waller?
Thank you, Chairman, just to say that my daughter and her partner are both members of the fund, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And councillor Mark Allen?
Thank you, Chairman, I'm in receipt of a LCC pension.
Thank you very much, Mark. Any other declarations of interests? If you find anything that you need to declare later on, please raise your hand and do so at that appropriate time. Thanks very much. If we move on then to item three, the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 5th of January, basically two pages, I'm sure you've read them, but we're looking for accuracy, basically can I have a proposer first and a secondary, proposed by Mark Allen and seconded by Bob Waller, that they are a true record of our meeting on the 5th of January? Can I have a show of hands, members only, of course, that we agree with those? Thank you. You don't have to, Tom, because, so we'll put you down as an abstention because you weren't in the committee at that time. So thank you very much, I'll sign these off appropriately and hand them to Tom later on, thank you. Moving on then, item four, the independence advisers' report, so back to Peter for his last one, so over to you. Is that better? Is that better? Yep. And I said then, in the first paragraph, that market sentiment, particularly in equities, was pretty fragile, and of course, earlier this week, the anxiety levels rose, and that was before Silicon Valley Bank went under on, whenever it was, a week ago, and of course, overnight, we've had the Credit Suisse debacle. I think what I'll do on Silicon Valley Bank is not say anything, but respond to questions, if anybody has them, as to its significance. What I would like to do is to remind you about the comment I made, I think at the September meeting, you remember the Warren Buffett expression, that when the tide goes out, it's only then that you discover who's wearing swimming trunks and who is not? And when we had the pensions and guilt saga, that was appropriate, and we thought, well, there might be a tide going out, and there was another calamity to come. Well, we've gone six months without one, and then we've had two in quick succession. So what are the implications of that? Well, there's obviously the short-term ones, both in terms of the banking sector, and also what bank behaviour will be going forward. By that I mean, do they get very risk-averse and not want to make new loans that they might otherwise have done? So those are the more direct effects, but in a sense, the indirect ones are perhaps more important, and principally, they are, what do you think central banks will now do? They were embarking on raising short-term interest rates. I mean, I had in mind as a rule of thumb, to five per cent in the US, four per cent in the UK, and three per cent in Europe. The market certainly thinks the banks are going to, the central banks are going to be very hesitant to raise rates in the short term, but time will tell. And of course, we've got longer-term issues, like how does the finance sector get financed? And in particular, the tech sector, the high-tech sector. When I reread my paper, I realised I hadn't made any comment on wage inflation, which was probably an omission. And it's rather curious at the moment, wage inflation in the UK is running at about six per cent. It's a bit higher in the United States, I think it's about seven, and it's rather lower in Europe, but six is a good figure. And just to give you a rule of thumb, the UK rate is roughly a per cent higher for the private sector, i.e. seven, and perhaps a per cent lower, or two per cent lower, in the public sector, but averaging six, and even if you throw in the one-off payments, bonuses, and the back-payment fudges that you are seeing increasingly in settlements, it's still only a per cent higher. What is curious is that the wage inflation rate fell last month, which I must say strikes me as being curious. The only explanation I've got is that a number of settlements have actually not been agreed and have not yet entered the data, but clearly, what happens to wage inflation is critical to what happens to retail price inflation and CPI inflation. So fickle markets, and it's clearly going to continue for a while, because anxiety levels are at very high levels, and nobody's going to commit money to equities, I don't think, until a period of days or weeks has elapsed without any more traumas. So I'd like to end on an optimistic note, but the optimism would be six months out. There are some things we shouldn't forget. China should be recovering very quickly in the second half of the year. 2024 is an election year in the United States, which is traditionally good for markets. And, well, energy prices are still surprisingly low. Now, they're going to stay low, I suspect, for another few months, so there are some positives which we shouldn't lose sight of. So Chairman, I'm going to shut up, and I'm merely going to thank you and your colleagues for listening to me so patiently in the last 12 years. The only person who has been here longer than me, of course, is Jo, who is a wonderful servant of Lincolnshire County Council, but other than that, I'm the longest-serving member of the committee, I think. Thank you, Chairman. Many thanks indeed, Peter. Any questions? Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Chairman, and I'd like to echo your remarks before I ask my question. I'm sorry to hear you go, Peter, and although I've only been here for a short time, I have really found your reports of value and very insightful in dealing with what I have to deal with on pensions and the wider world, to give a perspective without spin and without sugarcoating, which obviously the mainstream media and things love to do. I've got two points if I may, Chairman, I am going to ask about the Silicon Valley situation, because it's, personally, I find it intriguing and what implications it will have, and I'd like to know sort of your opinion on that, because I know very little about it, other than what I've heard in the news and what it funds. My second question is, when I can find my little bit of thing. If you were a betting man, Peter, how long do you think inflation would, will say, remain above five per cent in the long to medium term, and then once it reaches that point, do you think it will be a short time before it reaches the Bank of England two per cent target, or will the last couple be the hardest to reach, as they always say in sport? Thank you.
Let me address the second one first. I think inflation is going to be sticky, partly because of the wage inflation issue we've just talked about. So I was actually thinking inflation in the second half of the year might still be around five per cent. Don't forget, it's 10 per cent on the CPI at the moment, and rather higher than that on the RPI. I was staggered in the budget announcement yesterday that the OBR, the forecaster, reckons it'll be 2.9 per cent in December. Now, okay, we have had the starts of a, let's call it a mini-banking crisis, for the sake of argument, which is going to damp down the economy, which might well damp down inflation, but I'm not going to answer your question, Tom, because I'm not sure. It will fall, but I suspect it'll get sticky, so somewhere in the middle. Silicon Valley Bank was basically an accident waiting to happen, waiting to happen. It exists in Silicon Valley, that's its headquarters, it financed pretty much only tech startups, which obviously are risky, but what is quite amazing is that its deposits were almost entirely from tech startups. And that's curious, but what was happening is, tech startups were coming to the market to raise a couple of million dollars or so, and when they raised it from various funds, they then deposited that with Silicon Valley Bank and drew it down as their cash flow demands. So it was risky on one side and risky on the other. So it was an accident waiting to happen, but obviously, it's going to be bailed out. Thank you, Peter, I'll bring Mark in in a minute. Futsi's up 62 points at the moment, so starting to look a little bit better, but I had visions of 2008 again when I heard the first news, but it's good that at least the taxpayer didn't have to fork out, because HSBC have taken over Silicon Valley Bank. Mark?
Thank you, Chairman, and I'll be very sorry to see you go, Peter, as well, because I've worked with you for about eight years or something like that. The issue I've got relates to SVB, I suppose, predominantly, A, that it might be a specialist hiccup, shall we say, from a banking point of view, as opposed to Credit Suisse, which is a considerably different beast, and I think requires different actions that probably are going to have to be taken to remedy the situation, but it does seem as though the business model SVB had was a recipe for disaster from the beginning, wasn't it? So it's hardly, you know, how to run a bank, you know, with unlimited risk almost, which seems to be a silly situation. I thought that as a result of 2008, the regulatory bodies, both in the United States and the UK, as well as further afield, were trying to take actions and introduce new regulations, new requirements in terms of liquidity and all those sorts of things, to ensure this sort of thing didn't happen again. So how could a bank like SVB, you know, start up in the first place?
Well, there's no problem with SVB starting up, and the regulations were tightened after 2008, in some senses, in a draconian fashion, but SVB was, I think, the 16th-largest bank in the US, and incidentally, there are about 2,000 banks in the US, so three, four, or five of them do go under every year, it's not unusual. But the tight regulations only applied, I think, to the 10 largest, and SVB was below the radar, but otherwise, I agree with your sentiment, Mark. It was an accident that just had to happen sometime, somewhere. Fire away.
Very quick one. The UK arm, I think, is being taken over by HSBC. Is that likely to protect the UK position in relation to any outcomes from the overall issues associated with where SVB stands at the moment? And is there any likelihood that the same will happen in the States, or is the States washed its hands of it?
I'm not sure I know. I mean, HSBC has got a huge balance sheet, so it should be able to cope, but do you remember, Lloyds took over Halifax? And there was a considerable black hole inside that, but that won't emerge for months and years yet, so, you know, the answer is, I don't think anybody knows. Thank you. Tom?
Thank you for allowing me to come back, Chairman. Before I ask my question, I'd just like to make a comment. Peter mentioned the OBR, well, as you'll know and others will know, their reliability and accuracy of forecasts has a lot to be desired. I think in the entire time they've been stood up since George Osborne days, they've been right once, and they're quite well-known to be doom-mongers and doom merchants, so I'll leave that there and park it. Peter, there was a report, just before the budget, actually, and the headline was, the days of low tax are over, and that Britons are expected to pay high tax for their next 30 years, if we're not already, as if we're not already. What do you think, if that is the case, the long-term impact will be, and also, Chairman, whilst I'm here, what do you think the impact of the increased incorporation tax will have on either internal or outward investment into the UK?
Those are some fairly difficult questions to answer, Tom. I mean, high-tax economies usually damp down initiative and economic growth, so I think you'd have to assume, at least as a working assumption, that that was going to be the case, and I'm not sure the UK economy can grow, it used to grow at two per cent per annum, if you go back to the 1990s, maybe two and a half, it never grew at three per cent, maybe one per cent is the norm going forward, I don't know, but it's pretty lackluster. I'm not sure I can really comment on your other question, it's almost a philosophical point, but, oh, duck, I think, if you don't mind, Tom. Thank you, Peter, and thank you for your questions, members. We'll say farewell, but you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, Peter, if you wish, it's entirely up to you, okay. Right, if we're happy, then we'll move on then to item five, which is a report by the independent chair of the Lincolnshire Local Pensions Board. Over to you, Roger.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll take the report as read, but just want to make four comments. First of all, the board received two excellent presentations from West Yorkshire. One of them, we looked at the services to members approaching retirement, which we considered to be very good. We also had a presentation on freedom and choice, pension scams and transfers, with a particular emphasis on pension scams. This is a very topical area at the present time, a lot of concern from the regulator, regulators issued various codes of practice and advice, and I think it's fair to say that we felt that West Yorkshire were on top of these issues, and we also agreed as a board to study the regulator's latest module on transfer scams, and I'd certainly recommend that members of the Pension Committee also look at that. We had an update on the external audit, disappointed that the accounts are still not signed off, but the good news is that it will be an unqualified report, and just as an aside, Chairman, you know, with another hat on because of the membership of my institute, I am quite concerned that there are over 600 opinions not signed off for local and public authority accounts, some dating back to 2017, 18, and, you know, there's a capacity challenge, and there are problems on the regulatory front, but, I mean, serious delays like this for public sector finances is a huge worry in terms of financial management and stewardship. And I know it's not a ship of the Pensions Committee, but I just wanted you to be aware of that, there is a really serious problem. And the final one, Chairman, was a data quality report, and I won't go on about this, because Mark gets a little bit bored on this, but we were, I guess we were, well, we're optimistic that West Yorkshire are getting on top of the data issues, and like Peter, I wrote this two weeks ago and suggested that there should be representations to either the LGA or the Pensions Minister. I'm delighted to say the Pensions Minister has listened, and she's deferred the pensions dashboards, which I think is the right decision. Any questions? I'll try and answer them.
I'm sure that Matt will be able to have his words on what you've just said there, Roger, when it comes to item eight on the agenda, but are there any questions for Roger? Yes, Steve?
It's more an observation and a question. I say that you had an explanation of the rule of 85, I'm just dealing with a rule of 85 request through one of our drainage boards, and the information that came from West Yorkshire set out what the cost of the board was and what the new pension would be with the enhancement, but what it doesn't give is what the pension would be without the enhancement. So in terms of doing the report to the board, it was difficult to say what additional pension benefit that brought to the individual, so it's just an observation that that might be useful information to be included when that is sent out from West Yorkshire.
Think I'll pass that to Matt. Yeah, thank you for that, Steve, I'm sure Matt is making copious notes there about all the points that have been raised, and he'll answer them, I'm sure, in item eight, when we get to it. Any other questions for the Pension Board, Chairman? Yes, Mark?
I can't resist a certain extent. I recognise Roger's concerns about the accounts and auditing them and getting them fully signed off, rather than unqualified sign-offs, and I don't know whether Jo wants to make a comment about it, but, you know, I know from the Audit Committee, where we have these sort of problems in terms of signing off both the county councils and the pension ones in the final form, that it is difficult, and, well, there are difficulties in doing so, and part of that is to do with the bandwidth that the external auditors have in part, and secondly, in terms of the actual changes, in terms of the requirements that are set as by central government, and some of the requirements are virtually impossible to actually satisfy, and that's why we end up with an unqualified set of accounts, because, you know, they're asking us to do things that it's virtually impossible to actually do, but it doesn't necessarily alter the fact that we end up in the situation that you've just raised, Roger, and it is really unsatisfactory, I think, to be put in that position.
Chairman, I don't necessarily think it's the government's fault, I think it's the regulatory side, the accounting bodies, actually, that they're the ones who've raised the infrastructure issue, but my concern, quite frankly, is much wider than that, and that is that over 600 sets of accounts have not yet signed off, some going back to 2017, 18, in fact, there's one, 15, 16.
Yes, please, Michelle.
So I think it's a fair point, Roger, I think, but as Mark said, it's an issue nationwide, so I think many of the upper-tier authorities are in a similar position to us, in that some of them didn't have their 2021 account signed off at the point where the issue was raised by the audit faction, if you like, around infrastructure assets we had, so we were fortunate from that point. The 21, two accounts are, they're currently being worked on, we believe we're performing against the code, so we're not in the same position as a lot of authorities. Unqualified is good, that's what you want, so we're in that position too. We are really at the mercy of the audit sector, the external audit sector, but one good thing I can say is, obviously, we've just gone through a re-procurement, the national framework with PSA have gone through a re-procurement, KPMG have already had contact with us, and they're giving us assurance, and they'll be providing that assurance to Audit Committee as well about, they've only taken on the work with the current capacity they've got, so some of the current issues will come about because companies took on work without the staff to actually deliver them, assuming that the staff were chupie from the existing companies, so KPMG have given us assurance that that's not the case for them, so hopefully going forward, that won't be the case. Just another bit of assurance, we've presented back to Audit Committee our assessment against the Sitfor Financial Management Code, which is a new piece of guidance that they've introduced, and as part of that, we've currently got Grant Thornton looking at our financial resilience to give that extra layer of assurance for Lincolnshire County Council, and we'll be presenting that back to Audit Committee in the summer, so they've kind of given me some interim feedback, they're very comfortable with where we are in terms of our financial resilience, and absolutely echo your frustration at not being able to get the accounts sorted. Our team have done everything they can to try and get them delivered on time, and we feed back that regularly to Audit Committee, but we really are at the mercy of the audit sector at the moment, so.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Roger, for your report. I assume there's no other questions for Pension Board. So before we move on, just like, we have a guest sitting in the corner there, just to introduce him, is councillor Richard Bootroyd, and he is the executive member on the council, and coming to have a look at us. Richard, of course, served on the committee for about four years, I think, before he became an executive member, so welcome, Richard. Moving on then, thank you again, Roger, item six, Pension Fund Update, over to you, Jo.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is the standard quarterly update paper, and I'll just briefly run through the key points in each section. So section one, on page 17, sets out the funding change, funding level change and performance over the period. More information on the underlying manager's performance is in the Investment Performance Report at item 15. Paragraph 1.2 sets out the asset allocation with property and fixed income both under their tolerance levels and cash over its tolerance level. Relative performance has been above benchmark over the quarter, but underperforming on the 12-month period, and over three, five, and since inception figures are generally flat. Funding level, though, has increased as at the end of December to 107.4 per cent, with a surplus now of 69 million, as shown at paragraph 1.11. Section two and the appendix on page 31 shows how the fund meets the requirements of the pension regulator. We've got two new members to the committee who have that six-month window to complete TPR toolkit, so hopefully we'll be able to move to green once that has been done. Section three, on page 22, updates the committee on any breaches that have occurred, the only one is the standard late payment from a few employers, and that's covered in item nine on the agenda. There haven't been any changes to the risk register, so there's nothing to report there in section four, and section five provides an update on what's been happening with border to coast since the last meeting. The next joint committee is next Tuesday, papers were shared yesterday with the committee, so if there are any points or questions you'd like raising, please contact councillor Strangle, and he can raise at that meeting tomorrow, next Tuesday. Section six just updates the committee on the appointment of Tom Hodgson as the new academy sector representative, and welcomes him to the committee. Tom did complete his one-to-one training on Tuesday, so is fully up to speed with what the committee's role is and background. the committee's role is and background about the pension fund. Section seven on page twenty-four, as has already been mentioned, advises that Peter Jones is stepping down, thanks him for his service since 2011, and there is a recommendation that the committee review their independent advice requirements later this year, once the Good Governance Review is out. Rather than just jumping in and appointing a like-for-like, it may be that the committee think they might require a wider role that looks perhaps across more governance, admin and investments, but I think it's worthwhile seeing what that review comes out with as what is considered best practice, and then for the committee to decide what they would like going forwards. In the interim, Ian from Hyman's Robertson will cover that market update, which I think is really useful for the committee, so there won't be anything missing. Ian will be attending all the investment meetings, so we'll be able to cover that advice. Then the final comment I'd just like to make is on training and conferences at section eight. There was the annual LGPS governance held in Bournemouth in January, and the highlights provided by Hyman's Robertson are attached on appendix E. I'll just pause for a moment just to see if there's anything that members have attended and would like to share any information on.
Well, I attended the, excuse me, the LGA Annual Conference in Cardiff, and it was a very useful conference. Again, a lot of the aspects were around ESG with a lot on RI, of course, Responsible Investment, but very good conference, and I do recommend to the committee that, you know, you can attend these conferences, but you have to let Joe and Claire know and they will book you in. Again, I'm off in a couple of weeks' time to Cheshire for another conference, and I'll report back at that time. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Just on the online training academy, Lola, that's actually being updated later this year, and I'll bring further information on to how that's being updated and what the changes will be to the July meeting as part of the annual training paper. But just a polite reminder to ask members to complete their Lola training if they can. We will agree the date that we transfer to that new system, it's got to be done by the end of the calendar year, but obviously we would hope that members have all completed the current training before we move to the new one, but more in July on that. And finally, as requested by the committee, we've arranged the June the eighth committee meeting, so this is the, under the new structure, this will be the Investments and Stewardship Meeting. That will be held in Leeds at Border to Coast's offices, and will cover the normal meeting agenda, but also there will then be the time for more training and presentations from other members of staff across Border to Coast to give the committee that insight and hopefully that reassurance on the governance, how Border to Coast is run, et cetera. So we'll be confirming timings and travel arrangements nearer to the time, but please do get in touch with myself or Claire if there's any particular areas or particular presentations that you would like to see, whether it's on how they manage compliance, how they manage risk, how the HR is, whatever you would like to know, we have that opportunity to spend a day there and really cover any questions that you've got. So please do get in touch with me if there's something specific you'd like us to arrange. That was all I was going to say, so I'll happily take any questions. Thank you.
Peter?
Chairman, just before I go, I want to make sure the information is not lost on table, the table at the top of page nineteen, which is Investment Performance, because as Joe will remember, the 2010 data were imperfect because of a big transition, and the since-inception data is probably better than what is shown there. Just to recall the point.
Happy with that, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, there was large transition done, a disconnection between the benchmark and the actual asset allocation, so the actual, the fund return is correct, but the benchmark return is not and will be overstated. So actually, yes, it is, I mean, I think the most important thing is eight percent per annum since inception, which is well above the targets that were set by the actuary, and I think any of us would be happy with that return in our own personal finances. So basically, over the longer term, you know, the fund has performed well, but thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Chairman. It's not directly mentioned in the report, but as the smaller body rep, I just wanted to raise my concern about the actuary charges for the year-end accounting reports, which have increased this year. I understand some of the increases due to the revaluation, which I think is acceptable, but on the timeframes, now to get our reports in the same timeframe as we've had in previous years, we've now got to pay for that, which we didn't have to previously. So some of my colleagues have raised this with me and are concerned about the increasing costs of the end-of-year reports, and there's an additional cost this year, is there going to be an additional cost the future year, et cetera? So I just wanted to raise that as an issue on behalf of the smaller bodies.
Thank you, Steve. Claire?
Yeah, and I can happily comment on that, and I think I've provided to you and to the other IDBs a detailed response to that from ourselves and from the actuary. Just in terms of other members of the committee, the accounting exercises, we undertake three during the year with employers, in March with districts and some of the smaller scheduled bodies, and then in July with colleges and in August with the academies. The March exercise prior to this year had run a little bit differently to the July and August exercises, where we offered as standard just one date to receive reports, and that has always been based on actuals because, generally because of a move by auditors to require that detail. In March, we'd always offered an opportunity to have some estimates as well as the actuals. That is still being offered this year, but as Steve has said, the estimate exercise will incur a different, an additional cost, and that really is to represent the additional work that is required to do that, and also to bring that charging in line with those other exercises.
Thank you, Claire. Any other questions? Okay, if I can bring committee back to the recommendations on page seventeen, please. Two parts, consider and discuss the report and agree whether any action or additional information is required, and to agree to consider what the independent advice requirements are and how best to meet them following the publication of the Good Governance Review. On the second part, I think Joe's answered that quite adequately regarding what we will plan to do in the future regarding independent advice at the moment, where I'm sure we're all agreeing that Ian will continue in that role for us as Hyman's Robertson overseeing the independent sides. Happy with that, Ian, thank you. Any, sorry, can I have a proposal first of all that we're agreed with that? Mark, councillor Mark Allen, secondary, please, Steve Larter, all those in favour, please show. That's passed, thank you very much. If we can move on then to item seven, which is the Responsible Investment Update Report, and we're over to you, Claire.
Thank you. The report brings to the committee details of the fund's responsible investment activity during the third quarter of twenty-two, twenty-three. Section two of the report details the work of the Local Authority Pension Fund Forum, and paragraph two point two details the work that they've undertaken during the quarter. This includes the LAP Conference, which was held in December, and covered a range of issues primarily around human rights and climate issues. Further information on their activity is found in the paper and in their quarterly reports, of which there's a link contained. Annually, LAP reviews its work programme for the coming financial year, and for twenty-three, twenty-four, they will focus on responsible investment initiatives and promoting good governance, and there's further details on this set out at paragraph two point four. Section three covers the work of Border to Coast, and each quarter they publish their RI activity in detail in a quarterly summary. There's a link to this in the report, and the highlights from this are set out in paragraph three point two, and they include an overview of their activities, an industry update, high level information on their voting and their engagement activity during the quarter. In addition to the work provided directly by Border to Coast, they have appointed Rabico to provide voting and engagement services on our behalf, and details of their activity can be found in section four of the report. Section five highlights the responsible investment activity undertaken by legal and general investment management, and they also publish quarterly ESG impact information at a firm level and key ESG metrics for the Future World Fund, which we're invested in, and there are links to both of these documents contained in the paper. Section six covers the voting activity for the two Border to Coast equity funds that we're invested in, and there's more details of that at appendix A and B to the report. They also publish detailed line-by-line voting activity, which can be found on their website, and there's a link in the report to this. Section seven of the report covers the ESG reports prepared by Border to Coast for the two equity funds we're invested in, as well as the investment-grade credit sub-fund, and these reports are attached at appendix C to E and are summarised at paragraph seven point four. The final section of the report, section eight, covers the Stewardship Code, and if you remember from October where we brought the stewardship submission for twenty-twenty-two, we submitted our second report to the Financial Reporting Council, and in February we were informed that we were successful to remain as signatures to this. I don't plan to say anything else on the report, but I'm very happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Claire. Questions from members? There doesn't appear to be any, so thank you for your report, Claire. Oh, just coming in late. Mark?
I'm afraid I can't resist making some sort of comment about, and I do acknowledge that the report itself is called Responsible Investment Update Report, so there's no reason why it shouldn't concentrate on responsible investment issues. It's just some information about what actually happens in the process. Does this report simply come from the elements of discussions at LAP, FF and Border and Coast and anybody else that's involved? As a result, their discussions with companies and chief executives and all the rest of it about responsible investment initiatives and how that's been handled within companies. But there's a second part to the meeting, which says, you know, and how are you going to maximise, you know, the returns that the investments that the pension fund is actually making, or does that not come into it? I always seem to, when I read these reports, to get a jaundice view in terms of what's happening, you know, it's always targeted towards simply responsible investment or ESG or net carbon, net zero, or whatever it is, sort of discussions, and whilst those are important and need to take place, you know, are there other discussions that take place then about, you know, how they're going to give the best returns for our pension members so that they can continue to get good pensions and the pension investment is protected in itself? Maybe that would explain why I have the jaundice view sometimes when I actually read these sorts of reports.
Absolutely, the, you know, getting the good returns is the key thing, that is their job, but obviously as signatories of the Stewardship Code and just the general requirements that are out there now, we have separated out the responsible investment element to tell you the work that's being done there, because as we are all aware, if a company is well-run, it will generate better returns. So within Border to Coast, and you can, that might be an interesting discussion to have in June with Border to Coast, but obviously the investment side is all fully controlled, they have discussions, they go out, they do due diligence on companies, they have company visits where they're managing internally, they discuss with the underlying managers where it's the externally-appointed managers as to what they're doing, why they're doing, where underperformance is, why it's there, what changes are they making? So the responsible investment is one element of the overall investment monitoring. As I say, we have separated out to be more transparent and to meet some of the requirements of the Stewardship Code so that there can be that discussion, and people are aware when they look at our papers that we are taking being a responsible investor seriously. So it absolutely doesn't replace the normal monitoring that's done by investment managers on the underlying investments. We also obviously have comment later in the Investment Performance Report from Hyman's, who are also doing that and asking the questions of Border to Coast in how the performance is and why it is as it is. So hopefully that provides the reassurance that this is just one element of the overall investment monitoring process.
Mark?
It explains, I think, you know, why I make the comments, while it's necessarily given me all the comfort. Yes, we have to do it, but just going back to the point I was making, so the, you know, the pure investment return sort of discussions are not necessarily reported on apart from performance issues that we might have with some of them and a part of, you know, and a loss to a certain extent, and in the overall returns reports that we have, you know, because whenever I get the reports for the committee, there always seems to be this sort of thing and not something specifically associated with the discussions that do take place in relation to maximising the returns within the companies as well, you know, with a overall due regard to responsible investment initiatives and ESG and all the rest of it. So, you know, is that just lost to a certain extent? It just looks like we concentrate on these issues. Not lost, it's there elsewhere.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think Ian might want to come in, I don't know if you will, no, perhaps not. I think it's when they're making the, it's slightly different, because when they're making the investment decisions as to it's a good idea to invest in this company, there's all the information there, looking at the financials and the normal due diligence that would be done on making any investment, and they have the opportunity to either invest or not. So if they don't like what they're doing, or if they don't think the company is performing, they won't invest. The difference is, once they believe a company is going to give the return that's required, it's then that on the ESG side, is there anything that they're doing that could potentially be a shock to that company and impact the share price? Is there something that they're not looking, they really like the company, they think it's going to give the right long-term returns, but they need to be more transparent on what they're doing, perhaps on, so a fossil fuel company, what it's doing in its transition to clean energy? So they're part of the same picture, but I think there is a difference in how they go about doing it, because they like a company because they think it's going to make, they won't invest if they think a company's going to lose money, but then it's around the edges. How can they work with that company to improve its ESG, its ESG provision, how it actually makes sure that the companies it's investing in, the company's working well, it's providing good, you know, pay to its staff, it's looking after them, it's doing everything environmentally it can to be long-term, sustainable company? So it's, they wouldn't buy it if they didn't like it, but it's how around the edges they can ensure that it can maintain that growth and maintain that ability to provide those returns through what it does in being a well-run company. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
What can I add before we go to Ian? I mean, this report is having bought, you know, without having discussions about how the company's been operated to a certain extent, this is what these discussions tend to be about. There is a discussion about, you know, should we buy or should we not buy depending on what, and we've had lots of discussions about those sorts of things, and no doubt can continue to be interesting discussions about that, you know, a lithium battery manufacturer, you know, should we be buying into that even though that it's harmful to the environment, you know, because it does satisfy some requirements of net carbon, set zero? But this is, you know, having made them, we then start interrogating to a certain way the way that the company's been operated and its policies associated with delivering ESG and RI. And it strikes me that there could be a danger then, that, you know, because we are a big investor in these companies, you know, they react to the comments that we're making in relation to those sorts of things, operate their strategies and policies that they're operating for the company to the detriment of overall returns. That's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm getting at. Ian?
So I think when Border to Coast and other investment managers are engaging with the companies you invest in and their CEOs and their boards, whoever, they aren't only doing it on responsible investment and ESG issues. I think if, in appendix says this report, they have the proxy voting report, and you can see from that they have two hundred different votes were cast and different engagements were made, and then they... were made, and then but only two examples are given, and they just so happen to be on climate, probably because it's a responsible investment report and because they are the ones that across Borders Coast people are most interested in, but behind the scenes there are other considerations and votes being cast and engagements being done that aren't only about E S G and are about the financial piece. So maybe it's feedback to Borders Coast if they could include one non-responsible investment example or something in the future, if that's helpful, but just a private reassurance, they aren't only engaging on E S G.
Sorry, it is helpful, it's probably something to take up, go to leads.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think, you know, we're always willing to enhance and update and evolve the papers. So perhaps that's something more we can be putting into the investment performance report, because I think it is still cleaner and more transparent for Joe Blog, who I know lots of people read our committee papers, that that is a separate thing. But I think perhaps that's something we can look, and also with the new structure of committee meetings, all the investment and stewardship meetings going forward, we will be bringing a manager too. So you'll have more opportunities to have that direct questioning of our managers about some of their investment decisions. So hopefully, that will enhance the picture that you see that we are 100% not solely focusing on E S G and being a responsible investor. However, in being a responsible investor, we'll maintain those long-term returns because it's just about good companies, it's not the saving the planet side, it's about good, well-run companies, and it's just remembering that wider picture. And yet, a lot of the examples are about climate because exactly as Ian said, some of our partner funds within Border to Coast are on a slightly different route to us and have set, one of them set a very closely arriving net zero target, and the requirements from their committees are perhaps different. So it's trying, it's a one-size-fits-all, but we can absolutely look at how we can enhance that investment manager report.
Mark, could I just stop you there for a moment and let Tom come in, and then I'll bring you back in?
Thank you, Chairman. One thing I noticed with interest actually in the report, and it sort of relates to what councillor was saying, is the anti-E S G movement, if you want to call it that, that is happening in the States. Now, I know we operate under different rules in our financial institutions. Can you perceive a movement like that taking hold in this country? Because usually, as a rule of thumb, whether it be culture or music, we take a little bit longer, but usually things tend to follow as a rule of thumb from the United States. And certainly, if you speak to a lot of people, especially with what's happening at the minute with the cost of energy and everything else, the issue of climate change isn't as high up on a lot of people's agenda, it's actually, I just want to pay my bills, I want to heat my house, I want to be able to eat, I want to be able to use a car. And that conversation, certainly from the day job as it were, is growing increase, and even some M P, you know, sorry, but Lee said it in the House, I'm sure, and I'm sure others have as well, seems to be growing louder. So could that sort of take hold here? And if it does, will we respond accordingly? Or are we sort of hemmed in by the code and how we have to operate?
Whether or not it, I mean, there are plenty of investors that do not care. So if we wanted to show that we don't believe in fossil fuel investment, we could divest, somebody else would happily buy that. So there's already a lot of investors that don't care. I wouldn't like to say that it's anti-E S G because why would you not want to buy a well-run, well-managed company for long-term sustainable returns? So I think there is a difference between a climate change-focused investment that takes no account of return, which is not what we do at all, or a climate change-aware investment that is still looking to make that return but actually has that eye on the future and what's happening globally, what's happening with governments, and is able to adapt and change to still be there as a company in 20 years' time. So I don't, I think that hopefully answers, it doesn't answer your question, but hopefully explains where we are and actually where Border to Coast are as a whole. It's about being aware and not focused and driven to only invest in so-called good stocks.
Yes, please.
I'm aware where we are. My point is, and as you said, there's a difference between climate and well, a genuinely well-run company, so it pays its staff, well, it looks after its staff, its subcontract, its working conditions are decent. My question is around the specifics around, because you say it's looking to the future, where you could argue and other companies could argue and are doing, that actually we don't know what that future is. It could be that what we're being told at the moment actually isn't a future that people actually are going to invest in and are going to want because of the future, depending on who you listen to, say for example, is we all have electric cars, we're all limited to 300 miles, then need to charge it for how many hours. A lot of people are looking at that and going, that's going backwards, I don't want a future like that. That's a very rudimentary example. But that was more the point was, are we seeing a movement away from the green agenda side of E S G into almost a kick reaction of, I'm going to push against this and actually I'll invest in, not necessarily ourselves, but other investors are going to go, I'll invest in a company that's doing everything else right but doesn't have that tick because actually I'm going to generate additional return with that sentiment that seems to be building, especially in the States?
I think, I mean, I think Border to Coast have been quite clear in when they're selecting managers and when those managers are selecting companies, that they look at the whole. So they're not looking exclusively at climate within that. The, this anti-E S G initiative has been brought to us by Border to Coast, and it's been something that's been looked at by Rubico as well. So I think maybe it would be something nice to ask Border to Coast to touch on in June if they can talk to us a little bit more about what they're seeing, what the impact on the market is, because it's very, it's very hard to look at it in isolation. So I think maybe explaining how widespread it is, where we're seeing it and what impacts it's having would be a useful thing for them to pick up on.
Mark?
Thank you. To a certain extent, councillor Smith's taking my bits forward, and I want to take his bits forward to a degree. I'm very comforted to get your comments that whilst E S G and R I, quite rightly, because don't get me wrong, you know, I can understand the issues is important and should not be ignored, you know, as long as we're looking at that within the overall sphere of trying to generate the maximum returns for the pension fund. So I'm very comforted in terms of what you're saying, that it's perhaps just presentationally, it doesn't always come out like that. The, some of the underlying concerns though do continue to exist because, as councillor Smith referred to, I mean, there are changes taking place in government policies. You know, the Americans getting to the stage where they're perhaps almost totally ignoring carbon net zero and all those sorts of issues, you know, land of the free and all the rest of it. But even in Europe, there's a divergence taking place in terms of the policies that governments are moving towards from an adopted position. You know, Germany, Poland, Italy are looking at net zero considerably differently to what we are in the UK. You know, they've moved their targets because the problems that we've had over this winter period have focused attention, shall we say, in terms of where some of the carbon net zero issues are leading us towards. So there is that sort of difficulty because when you go and talk to these companies, they're multinational companies, you know, there's a guy from Germany there saying, you know, let's forget about this for the moment and, you know, carry on digging holes in the ground or destroying villages to expand the coal mine or whatever it is. So there is a sort of conflict there between, you know, the comments that have been fed into these organisations, which must be difficult. And there must be a, I think you referred to it, a conflict within Border to Coast in terms of the operating principles, because there's a fairly disparate number of partners within the pool. I used to work for South Yorkshire, so I know what his nickname was and how it operated, you know, whatever it was 30 years ago. You've got to remember that all the streets in South Yorkshire are named after roads in Donetsk and places like that, you know, because that's where our twinning was. So, you know, I can see, I could see that being an area where pressure, different pressures apply. And we have to then rely on our chairman reacting to those pressures and trying to ensure that partnership, that there is a partnership view that's being put forward rather than, you know, a very, you know, socialist view in terms of, you know, what we should be doing in terms of how we go about our investments.
Yeah, can I just come in, Joe? Joe mentioned at the start of this meeting that when I go to Border to Coast on Tuesday, we would welcome any questions. I would be delighted if you'd put in writing your questions to Border to Coast. You mentioned the word disparate. Actually, the other 10 chairmen of Border to Coast and I work very well together, funny enough, and we are right across the party spectrum, basically. So there's a lot of questions that are asked. I'm in seven years in this chair, I think, and I've never had a question from committee yet to ask Border to Coast. So put it in writing, please, send me an email and I will ask the question. And not only that, I will report back to you with the answer to your question, so please do. I don't mind how many questions, I'll ask them.
Chairman, it must have improved some considerably from when I used to go to those meetings and where there was, you know, where, and it was very early days when I used to go. And we were, you know, talking about the traditional things about should we be investing in cigarette companies and all the rest of it? And there was a disparate view there in terms of, you know, some of the partners were saying we shouldn't be, whereas I think Lincolnshire at the time was still taking its standard view that maximising the returns is what's important, you know, rather than, you know, playing those sorts of games. May well have improved, Chairman, with your input, of course.
I beat them into submission, Mark, to be quite honest. But yeah, the chairman off the board is an independent councillor, you'll probably know him well, you certainly get the reports from him and L A P F F as well, and you get those reports as a committee member. Talking about L A P F F, just briefly, it's always in December, and here's the conundrum that I always have, because we have a full council meeting, executive member, always on the same time as we're supposed to be in Bournemouth, and that's a bit of a conflict for us. And the question, of course, I will be speaking to the leader, and maybe you can mention this as well, Richard, on my behalf, and on behalf of the other members as well, because the, that Friday is the Friday that the full council meeting's on, is the last day of that conference in Bournemouth, and it's a three-day conference altogether, and it's a very good, and we are signed up to be representing Lincolnshire Council on the L A P F F, Local Authority Pension Fund Forum, for those that may not know that. So, yeah, it is a conundrum. But I come back to the point that, you know, please send your questions to me, I'm there on Tuesday, it'll be a long meeting, if you've seen the agenda, it's quite extensive, but that's not a problem, we will, I will ask the questions on your behalf. Joe, did you want to come back?
I just wanted to say that absolutely, that's a really great way to get those questions across directly to Border to Coast. The other thing, because I can keep talking, as you're aware, but I think it's perhaps better to ask Border to Coast perhaps those questions directly. But the other thing I'd like to point out, and there is a link in the report to it, if you actually look at the quarterly stewardship reports that Border to Coast publish, just looking at the breakdown of the topics of their engagement, 32% over the last quarter was on business strategy. So they are looking across the whole. So perhaps that's a good place to start to get an idea of exactly what are they doing? I know we talk about responsible investment is not just climate change, it is the whole. So perhaps that's somewhere that is a useful place to start and see actually, environment 30%, business strategy 32%, governance 14%, social 14%, E S G general 9%, global controversy nothing in the quarter, and A G M proposals 1%. So there is quite a wide range of topics that they do engage in and discuss with companies.
Just one final point, thank you very much. You have had the answers and give me a lot more comfort in terms of how we go about things. Just one final point, perhaps at some stage, we will be able to provide some evidence that companies that are involved in, you know, E S G and R I to a very high degree are actually providing the returns that other companies are. I think that would be even more comforting.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions before we move on? Well, I'd like to bring you back now to the recommendations on page 41, that the committee considered the report, I think we've done that, and we've discussed the responsible investment activity undertaken during the quarter. Could I have a show of hands that that's accepted, please? Thank you, that's unanimous, that's passed. If we can move on then, and thank you for your report as well, to item eight, and I'd like to bring in Matt from West Yorkshire Pension Fund. Over to you, Matt.
Thank you, Chair. This is the quarterly admin report from West Yorkshire. I shall go through the main points of this. There's a few slides at the end that I'd like to discuss with you. And then from the two points that were raised on the dashboard, I'd like to pick that up at the end if I haven't mentioned it already, and the 85-year-old, if that's all right with you, Chair?
Absolutely.
Looking at the report, looking at the table of the point 1, point 2, key performance indicators, a measure of obviously our performance on your administration, broadly, I think it is still very good. There is some areas where we haven't met, and looking at the explanations underneath, I think there's three broad areas. One is priority, and certainly if the requirement to complete the work is in the future, all that work doesn't have a monetary value or payment, it doesn't become an immediate priority and therefore may be deferred until a later date. We have in certain areas had some increases in volumes, quotations for retirement and early retirements themselves. I think this has been mentioned before. We don't know why, it could be to do with the cost of living crisis, people are considering leaving the workforce. I'm sure we've heard about early retirements and getting people back into work this week with reference to the budget. So that may cause sometimes some delays in processing the work, just the volumes. And then, as we've discussed in the past, retention of staff and the recruitment of staff, and the recruitment's been ongoing now for over a year, and I think there are some results and some improvements, but certainly we still have some inexperienced staff with experienced staff undertaking training. What I would expect as we move into the next quarter is we would see some upturn in those. But that's the three broad areas. Looking at the rest of the report, your membership numbers are steadily increasing, which is what we should expect. Employer contact, we have a double-edged sword from my perspective here, I've sat here in front of the commission, I've looked at some of the responses to our customer surveys or our survey letters, and I think 15.3% is actually quite good. I would expect to have a response rate of between 10 and 30% so that we know that we have a good cross-section of your membership. I'm just a little bit disappointed, to be honest, in the satisfaction scores. And looking at past scores, it does seem to be, you know, a little bit random. There could be all sorts of reasons. I suspect it depends on who we've surveyed in that period. If we're surveying someone who's retiring, we may get very high scores. If a lot of people have left, maybe even disgruntled with their employer, they're unlikely to get such a positive response in the surveys. But I'll keep an eye on that one for you. Our employer team have continued with their webinars, all recorded, all there for employers to see, there's been quite a few events up to and through the Christmas period. I D R Ps, I think this is quite good news really, because although there's a few listed, with the exception of one on I D R P stage two, there are no new cases, and I'm not aware of any new ones at the moment, and I'm really pleased with that. And the one that is outstanding, I checked yesterday, it seems to be a little bit of an odd case, let's put it that way, for an appeal against the award of an ill-health pension or the refusal to award it. We've been asking for additional medical information, the stuff that should be considered as part of the process, and we've asked for it a couple of times, there's been a mention of it in the process. What I realised as of yesterday is the member themselves has barred anyone from access to their medical reports. So now we know that, we can push on with the decision. That is quite a rare event, I wouldn't know why a member would choose to do that. Looking at the administration work we've undertaken, we've had, I think, three new employers in the fund, and looking ahead to the future, we've started work on eight further admissions, so there's quite a bit of work there. Staffing, relatively good news, I've mentioned retention as one of the issues on the K P I's. We've got seven outstanding posts in the service centre, I think to date that's three. So again, broadly good news, and there is still one vacancy on the employer relation team. team. Our audits have been good, particularly around the AVCs. Four recommendations that were made have now been implemented. My Pension, this is obviously the member portal. We like to put our annual benefit statements for scheme members on there. And it does seem to be a bit of a bone of contention here. You've asked for certain things, access to data, and we've said we'll go away and talk to our software provider. That hasn't happened. I'm a little bit frustrated. I'm sure everybody here is frustrated. But there are a few slides. I think it's been, somebody said it's a presentation. I think it's a little bit generous, but I have a few slides that we can discuss. And hopefully, there's some information in there that is useful to everybody. Web registrations are increasing. I think that's broadly good news, because we want everybody on the portal. We want to put their information on the portal. If nothing else, that saves costs, it saves printing, it saves time. And I'm not going to go into any details on the budget, except that there seems to be some overspends and projected overspends. In summary, this is partly to do with the cost of living. Everything's gone up. Everything is more expensive. Even Bradford charges more. IT services are more. We've had to pay to recruit staff. We're paying for those staff's training. We're paying for that staff's IT. So generally, costs will creep up. And of course, it's noted in there that looking ahead, there are additional costs, £1 per scheme member head for the IT development to implement MacLeod. Just a reminder to the committee that we are still the cheapest administration in local government, and by some way, by about £20 per head, I forget the figure. So, but again, we'll keep an eye on that and monitor that for you. Just before Christmas, we won an award, West Yorkshire Pension Fund, Good Governance Award, which was good to hear. And as of next week, at the Pension Age Awards, we are shortlisted for three awards. If I now look through to those slides, any questions on that before I go on to the slides, please?
Yes, Matt, I have a question for you. It's interesting that the decision is to put the MacLeod increase on the member rather than the employer. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
I think broadly, it's driven by government. Yep. So, and the cost has always been implied that way or implemented that way. However, you're probably aware that there is a challenge. Pre-Christmas, the FBU, the fire union, with one of the NHS unions, the doctors, there was a judicial review hearing. And their challenge is on that point, that these costs should be borne by the government, not the employer, and certainly not the scheme member. Now, I don't know the outcome. I think government are broadly quite happy with the way it went. But if they do win, expect an appeal. If the government lose equally, expect an appeal. The reason why this is quite a big thing, and you're all probably aware, is that the scheme is costed. And by that, I mean, the contributions that employers, employees, scheme members pay is directly related to the cost of providing that administration and their benefits. Should that cost be deemed to be less, and we are looking here retrospective to 2016, then arguably, every scheme member is overpaid. So that's a potential nightmare for every fund and every administrator. Because what happens then? Do we reimburse contributions? Or do we then have to change the accrual rates and the benefit values? Now, that's not so bad if they're active, but that's terrible news if they're already pensioners, deferred, or even passed away, because we need to look at their records and then look at how to be overpaid. On the other hand, if the scheme has been too cheap, then the benefits arguably were not paid for at the correct level. Contributions could go up, or the accrual rates could go down, and we could be in a situation where pensioners have been paid too much money. So who knows where we're going with this? I know my personal opinion. I'll leave you to have your own. But it is, we're not even close to the end of the road, Chairman, on this one.
Thank you for that, Matt. And by the way, well done on the awards. I'm planning to go to Ikea shortly. If you want another cabinet, let me know. Any other questions, Tom?
Thank you, Chairman. Could I be advised what a type 2 AVC is, as I've never heard or come across the acronym before?
That's a good question. You're going to have me dig in at the back of my mind for that. There are different, I'll check my answer, but from memory, there are different types of AVC. In so much as an AVC that comes within the lifetime allowance. So you could, you know, you can have the benefits paid all in cash or in cash and part income. And type 2, I believe, is you won't be able to access it all as cash, because the fund is too big. So you'd have to have part of it paid as income as well. I will check that and I'll come back to, probably to Joe and let them know, if that's all right. So a long time since I've done any proper administration.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the answer. Because it's clearly something, because I read that bit with interest in the report, that it's type 2s are causing you a bit of a headache with how they're operating, basically. So thank you for the answer. It's very helpful.
Yes, I think I've been whizzing through the Lola exams, if we can call them that. And that came up in there. So if you not got to that, Tom, I think it'll be answered in there. But yeah, thanks for that. And thank you, Matt. Any other questions? Right, if we can bring you back to the recommendations on page 73, please. Committee is asked to discuss the activity and performance of the administration service.
Sorry, excuse me. Sorry, councillor Strangle. There's just a few presentational slides that Matt just wanted to go through. Apologies.
No, okay. There's not too many, Chairman. So, this is about my pension usage. And I think the question was raised before I started. So this is over a year ago. Can we get some data out of my pension? Can we see if scheme members are looking at their annual benefit statements? Remember, I said we want to put everybody on the, everything on the portal. We want access to that or member access to that. It's cheaper, it's quicker, it's much more efficient. We put that to our software provider. We said, can you give us data on the access of annual benefit statements? And they went away and looked at it. And then the trail went cold. And out of probably frustration last year, I picked it up, because it wasn't a complicated question. The answer is it hadn't really moved on from Civica. And although we had asked questions and chased, it had gone cold. And this is me talking to our communication teams and trying to provide information based on our current capability. So I'm hoping I'm pressing this right. It's not moving. Do I have to point that anywhere? Thank you. Right. Okay. So what we've got here are numbers, probably about a month ago, of members that are registered on the portal. So 8,106, 106 have registered. Of those, over 5,300 have logged in and looked at the ABS since it was produced. Now, we say and assume they've looked at their ABS. I can't tell specifically it's that document, but I can tell they've been on the document pages. We know that 2,700 of those logged in within 90 days of the release of the annual benefit statements. And 2,600 or didn't log in at all in this period. And we had 61 that didn't log in at all. So we've got a breakdown of people that are looking at their benefits on the portal. What we've got on the second slide, if you could pull that up, is looking at the period. So the blue line are people logging in just into my portal. So for any reason, it could be to update their details. And the brown line are people that are going in and looking at those documents. And we can see that we're getting about 2,000, nearly 3,000 hits in May, to 3,500 hits in July, and it tails off towards the end of the summer. So as we can see, at the peak of ABS release, we have got people using the portal, which I think is really useful. And then what we thought, well, it's useful, but it doesn't tell us anything, because it's just one period. So well, let's have a look and see what happened over Christmas. So this is, you know, this is sort of well after annual benefit statements. And what we find is on both those lines of more than half, 1,500 in December, are accessing my portal, and only 500 looking at their document pages. What I find quite interesting, and I would have expected, is that by the end of the, say, the Christmas holidays, we are getting more frequent hits on both lines. Generally, post-Christmas is a busy time in pensions. People are sat at home, it's the beginning of a new year, they've probably spent too much at Christmas. They want to know what their pension's worth. Yeah, can I retire tomorrow? I've had enough. Yeah, I don't want to go back to work, whatever it is. I would expect that, because I would expect retirements in January to be high. I would expect retirements in spring to be high. And I would expect retirements in the autumn to be high. So this is quite interesting. If nothing else, this is something that we could potentially use to try and predict where we have busy periods. So we did a bit more, because our communication team, Stuart particularly, got quite excited. And he thought, what else can we do? So they had been doing some work, the communication team, with TLF, and looking at where we were getting people get onto our website. So this isn't even the portal, this is the website. And we can see that people are accessing the website and via the website, getting onto our portal itself. And 65% come through these formal means. Interestingly, nearly 25% a quarter have actually got their details of their portal saved. And now they can just click on that and they're straight into the benefit information. Can't really do much with that. This is just useful information. So we looked at a bit more on website usage. Through June and August, we were getting 1,000 hits, maybe, certainly, you know, nearly 1,500. And then again, we looked at a later period, and the hits on the website dropped off to 200. So I again would think that people that are going through the website in these periods are actually going to my portal and going on to the document pages. So in a long way round, I think we're providing you with the information, at least asking the question that you asked us over a year ago. Just a little bit more information on this thing is we actually paid for a company called Page Search. It was a temporary campaign on Google, so that when pensions, you know, our members searched my pension, it pulled through West Yorkshire Pension Fund and the register for my pension. It pulled that right to the top of the list and just made it easy for people to get in to the portal. So you could see that the data that was coming out at that time of hits on the website broadly mirrors what we have just seen. Now, that, in my mind, isn't really a presentation. That's just a scattergun of what we can do now to broadly answer your question. I spoke to comms this morning. We are recruiting to another web designer role. The interview was yesterday. There might be more interviews this week, I don't know. And potentially, there is a project, maybe a piece of work for our web designer, because we think we could turn this into a dashboard. And we can get monthly, weekly, annual, you know, data analytics out of this to answer your questions. And specifically, we can even have page search. So we say, look to ABS, get over 500 hits, we'd get an alert. So we can actually then be reporting at the meetings, you know, where members have been looking and what frequency and how often. So really, I don't know if I've answered your question or triggered a debate, but I'd like to think I've actually managed to provide something that's been lacking in over 12 months. So happy to take questions on these few slides.
No questions? Yes, Mark?
It's really just a comment, that it is very interesting, you know, what the data can be used for and how useful it might become. I think what we need to do is think about how we can use it usefully and so on. But it seems to have been a very worthwhile exercise, and you're obviously very interested in it. So we would need to take it on and take it forward in some sort of way, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Yes. Any other questions? None seen. Thank you, Matt, for your report. Yes. And I'm sorry that I wasn't aware that you were going to be showing slides, so I apologise for that.
No, no, absolutely fine, Chairman. Would you like me to comment on dashboard and the 85-year-old before we move on?
Yes, please.
Right. So the dashboard, it is good news, Roger. I don't think we should get too excited, because all we know is that implementation has been deferred. We haven't been provided with any further information or guidance. So West Yorkshire intention is to carry on with our plans from next month, April through to staging date in September 2024, until we hear otherwise. What I understand is that there will be further information provided before the summer recess. Although, interestingly, they didn't say which summer. So we will continue implementing, we're continuing liaising with employers, and we'll continually liaise with the pension regulator, who we've been working really closely with. So at the moment, from the pensions regulator, I understand we are ahead of other funds in our position, which is good news. The 85-year-old, I have a couple of thoughts on this. I will go back and ask what we've provided and why. But just to remind the committee, the 85-year-old is for membership accrued up to the 31st of March 2008. And under the regulations, or those scheme regulations, if a member satisfied the 85-year-old, they may retire from age 60 with an unreduced pension. The 85-year bit is quite simply age, so age 60, plus at least 25 years' membership. It's as simple as that. Unfortunately, since 2008, protections or that rule has been removed, and then protections have been implemented. Those protections now allow members to retire from age 55, and they allow employers to effectively allow the 85-year-old to come into effect from age 55. Because it's age 60, it's not allowing full payment of benefits. But what it is allowing is a five-year reduction. So it's kind of a halfway house. What I would say is that if you don't agree as an employer to the implementation or payment of the benefits, then there is nil cost. Because if the member wants the benefits, they must resign, and they would have it paid with the full reduction applied, which could be five years on that, or a bit more, because it doesn't have to be effective from age 60, it could be 61, 62. And if you do agree to it, it's going to be one cost. So the question is, and I've understood it from yourself, was why have you got the payment in full or the maximum amount permissible, but not the fully reduced amount? My answer, without looking at it any further, would be the pension value shouldn't be of concern to employer. And if it's not going to be the full amount, the cost will be zero. Now, that might be why we haven't provided it. But that is a relevant question. I've always wondered why, because you're not the only employer that wants to know the reduced amount of pension without cost. And that's a bit of a grey area, because it's actually the pension value, the scheme member pension value, is that relevant to an employer? Is it something that they should know always? Is this an area of GDPR? Because it's not an employer responsibility, there's no employer cost. I'll go and research it all. But just out of curiosity, if I understood the question, it's we've provided the full amount, but we haven't provided the zero amount, and you wanted to know why. And it might be that. But again, my question is, why would the employer want to know the reduced amount?
Steve? If I come back, Chairman, and, you know, I'll just figure this out the air. At the minute, say, we've got a request and it's going to cost the board £25,000 to invoke the rule of 85, the board wants to know what extra benefit is that going to give to the individual. If it's only going to give them £20 a month extra pension, why is the board spending 25 grand to give them that benefit? If it's going to give them an extra £3,000 pension, then, you know, you can see that over 20 years or whatever, then that's quite a big benefit to that individual. So it's really just to give, it's not to give the exact figures, but just to give a feel for what extra benefit that individual would get from the board making a payment of X amount.
Okay. I will certainly push that back. Here's a relevant point. The regulations only ask for a decision to be made and the cost to be made. And I said, it is quite a grey area. It's quite an interesting area, because once that pension is in payment, it's not the remit of the employer. But let's find out. And I'll bring that back to you. That's not a problem at all. I'll find out. I'll probably put something through Joe, and perhaps you can provide that to yourself. Is that all right? I don't think there's any other questions, Chairman? Otherwise...
Don't see any. I'm sure that you've answered Roger's and part of Steve's anyway. I'm sure that you've answered Roger's and part of Steve's anyway, so thank you for that, Matt, and thank you for your report.
Thank you, is it all right if I?
You may, if you wish.
Thank you.
Thanks again. So bring you back to the recommendations on page seventy-three, that the committee discussed the activity and performance of the administration service during the last quarter. We've done that, so can I have a show of hands that we accept that as noted? Thank you, that's unanimous. Moving on. Item nine, which is the employer monthly submission update, over to Claire.
Thank you. This is the standard quarterly report on late and incorrect employer submissions and today covers the third quarter of twenty-two, twenty-three. The fund monitors closely employer compliance with their statutory responsibility to pay over member contributions. And contribution should be received by the fund on the nineteenth of the month following their payroll. And the fund classes any employer as late if either the cash or the supporting data is received beyond this time. Details of the number of late payments and data submissions are set out in table one on page one hundred and four. There was generally good compliance from employers during the quarter, but you can see that there was a spike in December in the late payment of cash contributions when seven employers failed to make these payments on time. Four of these came from one payroll provider who was late with their own payment and that of their three clients. They're a large employer within the fund, three district councils and their service provider. And all of those employers have been contacted to remind them of their responsibilities to pay by the nineteenth. Turning to table two, an employer who misses the fund's deadline in three out of six months will be fined unless they can offer extenuating circumstances. There have been six fines issued during the quarter. Four of these relate to hangover issues with two payroll providers from quarter two and these were covered in detail at the last meeting and are summarised at paragraph one point six in the report. The other two fines appear to be isolated cases and we've not seen any further issues identified at either of these employers. And I'm very happy to take any questions on the report.
Mark?
Thank you, Chairman. I think the report shows that fundamentally, there's nothing worrying in terms of the situation that we are. It's unfortunate that there seems to be a couple of employees that frequently appear on the list. The question I got is just really for point of information. It says fines are currently set at a minimum of hundred and thirty-six pounds. Does that mean there is a maximum or no maximum in terms of the fines that we can actually put out to these naughty employers? Or does it mean that fundamentally there is always a hundred and thirty-six pounds and we might take a different decision if they get really, really bad?
So the first fine that we would issue is at that hundred and thirty-six pounds, Mark. It goes up to a fine which is just over two hundred pounds if they're getting a second fine. But it's really to reflect the cost of the additional work, so that fine, it is limited at that amount. I don't think we would look to fine above those levels. Although it is quite an interesting point because obviously if people are paying cash late, we're incurring a loss of interest on that and those interest rates are now higher than they have been in recent times where it really didn't make a great deal of difference. And potentially, in the four employers that we lost that were late, and they were only late by a couple of days, but it was just short of a million pounds that was due to us. We can happily go away and think whether we want to impose fines on late cash. But late cash is generally not the thing that we see.
No, I wouldn't suggest that by any means. I think what it shows is that there is enough incentive there to get them back on to the straight and narrow, I think. And it's maybe, there's the ability to change the situation if it got out of hand. I think that's what's important.
Right, thank you. Yes, Bob?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I know on the late payments that of the seven late cash payments in December, three of them were councils, two of which were district councils, so I will feed that back and see if we can get some improvement there.
And they're well aware because we've been speaking to them about it, but they maybe won't want to be embarrassed amongst their peers.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say this might be a silly question since it's my first, but it kind of goes on from what the councillor said. How much do the employers know about the issues with late payments and late data? And how much do they, and maybe for the committee as well, what the issues you've got with that? And also, I was thinking about the fines, I couldn't see where it said how much the fines were, I can see it now. But maybe a thought of, because a hundred and thirty-six pound might not be very much of a deterrent for a large organisation. Maybe a percentage of the bill might be a better way?
On the first part of the question, in terms of feeding back to employers, we, if somebody is, if an employer is late, we don't just go back to their payroll provider, we go back to the employer as well. So the payroll provider will be being notified, but the employer will as well, so they should be fully aware. And West Yorkshire, we have a list of payroll contact, strategic contact and finance contact. So they will be spread amongst payroll providers and the employer itself. So it is an issue which, when those late payments are made, is raised with the employer as well. In terms of the fines, it's meant to reflect the additional time of the fund. And as you write, yeah, if it's a parish council, a hundred and thirty-six pounds will be a lot of money. If it's the county council who are paying over seven, eight million pounds to us a month, it isn't such a big deal. But it's not meant to be a deterrent, it's meant just simply to reflect those costs. And employers shouldn't need a deterrent. I'm not saying that they don't, but they shouldn't need a deterrent to do what they're doing because it's a statutory responsibility for them. And it's a responsibility that they should want to take seriously because it's their employees' benefits that they're paying across to us.
And bring Joe in.
Yeah, if I can just add on to a bit that Claire said. The fines are actually set out within the administration strategy that is shared with all employers for comments and for agreement. And also, we are actually within the regulations able to make late interest fines. We never have because we do, we would rather try and work with the employers. Kind of the top point of escalation is they get a call from me. And we try and address it that way, but it is very much about working with the employers to get that done. And it is something that is mentioned at every annual employer meeting about the responsibilities of employers, not their payroll providers, to make sure they are paying everything across on time with the correct data. So it's something we do take really seriously. The fine level, as I say, exactly as Claire said, it's not a punishment, it's to reflect the additional work that's involved in having to do the chasing, having to do other things. So just to clarify that little bit of extra information.
Thank you, Joe. And Tom, you can be our academy champion on late payments there. Tom?
Thank you, Chairman. I note the months of May, June, July and August are particularly high for breaches in terms of submission of data. Are these issues solely or primarily down to the issues as highlighted in point one point six? Or were there other instances of this? And if there were other instances of this, what were they and are they resolved?
Yeah, they were primarily that, they weren't totally because they never are. There will always be, there are always one or two employers who will fall on to that list. They will be resolved issues or you will see them falling into that fines table. But as I explained, this quarter, there were two fines issued. So obviously, they were late three out of six times, but they were isolated and we don't have any underlying concerns. We broadly bring back to the committee in that narrative where we have any real concerns. But there will always be one or two who, for IT problems or staff sickness, will maybe miss one month on an isolated basis.
Thank you. Any other questions? We can bring you back then to, excuse me, page one oh three, that the committee consider the report and if there are any further actions they wish to take against employers submitting late or inaccurate payments or data. I presume we've covered all that, so can I have a show of hands, please, that we're happy with that? Thank you, that's unanimous. And thank you very much, Claire, for your report. Moving on then to item ten, which is over to you, Joe.
Thank you, Chairman. An apology as I have noticed that I didn't update the year in the subject line. So it's not referring to the twenty nineteen valuation, it is the twenty twenty-two one. But as you're all aware, the Actuary undertook the triennial valuation as of thirty-first of March twenty twenty-two and we brought draft results to this committee in September last year. Alongside the valuation, we work on the funding strategy statement, so that has been updated. And this reflects the fund's approach to funding its liabilities. And there's more information on the purpose of it and the funding objectives set out in paragraphs three and four on page one hundred and ten. We sent out all the individual employer results to the employers in November alongside the draft funding strategy statement for consultation. And all employers were invited to attend a presentation with the Actuary and offered one-to-one surgeries to discuss their results in November as well. Pleased to say, all employers have now signed their declarations to say that they will pay those rates for the following three years. And the rates they'll actually be paying are set out in the Rates and Adjustment Certificate, appendix five of the valuation report, which is on page one hundred and seventy-nine of the reporting pack. We didn't receive any comments back on the funding strategy consultation, but I'm sure everyone read it cover to cover. So this is just the final version of that funding strategy statement and valuation report that the committee are asked to approve. Once that's been done, they will be published on our website, so I'll happily take any questions, thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Chairman. What are the risks to the fund if educational establishments that are currently in the fund are no longer required to offer LGPS to non-teaching staff? And how long will this risk take to mature and what are the financial implications to us, if any at all?
Thank you, that's a simple question. Obviously, a third of our membership, a third of our employers are academies. There has been a change recently to the colleges. I think it's highly unlikely because they are taxpayer-backed institutions that they would withdraw the LGPS offering because it is a really valuable recruitment tool and they are, at the end of the day, the equivalent of public sector workers. So to quantify it, it would be very difficult. It would have a huge impact because the maturity of the fund, the academies are generally the more immature employers because they tend to have younger people coming in. They have, because they're generally newer, they have less pensioner members, less deferred members. So it would hit the maturity of the fund, which would increase the costs going forward. But it's, I would say it's on the very unlikely side as a risk. And it's something we can't really control or manage ahead of it. It's just being aware, I think the risk is more on actually non-academic employers. So are some of our tier-three employers or things like housing companies and things like that that are looking to come out of the LGPS. But as a fund, they don't make up a huge proportion of our employers. So we don't have the same risks there that some other funds have. That's probably not fully answered the question, but I think that's as much as I can give, I'm afraid.
No, I appreciate it, you don't have a crystal ball, Joe, and I appreciate it as a guest's imagination and you're quite right. It's certainly from the teaching side of it, even for non-teaching staff, it's very much seen as a recruiting tool because certainly that was from somebody who's in the public sector. That's what somebody always said to me is that was the payoff. Your pay was less, but you had a better pensioning at the end of it. You can have an argument if that's still the case, but that's above my pay grade, as they say.
Mark?
Thank you, Chairman. This sort of just develops the comment that councillor Smith made. If employees that are currently in the LGPS scheme because of their employment is stupid into, are stupid into a private sector company, presumably the terms and conditions that go with the individual employees will certainly apply to start with in terms of maintaining their pension rights and all those sorts of things. But what happens if the private sector company then tries to effectively remove those rights because it's causing an imbalance within his own organisation? You know, some of the employees are on a very comprehensive pension scheme and the majority of his employees are not. It's causing aggravation within the company and he tries to rationalise the situation by effectively taking those people out of LGPS. Does that happen or can it actually legally happen or are those rights protected forevermore?
This is perhaps slightly more of an HR issue than a pensions issue as such, but... So absolutely, when, for example, when the council outsourced to Mouchelle, well, no, that's not a good example because it, no, admitted body wasn't available then for them to do. So when the council outsourced to Serco, those staff that move from the council to Serco would be entitled and eligible to remain in the LGPS and Serco becomes an admitted body into the fund. Now, if an individual that's employed by Serco then wishes to move within Serco and is no longer working in that role for the council, then they would lose potentially that LGPS right because they're working outside of the LGPS work. We've not really seen it with any employers that have come in as admitted bodies where they've wanted to whole-scale change and remove people. What would happen though, if they did that, then that body would have a cessation event. So if it suddenly had no more active members, it would incur a cessation event which would mean we would look at, the Actuary would look at the liabilities and the assets at that point in time and then potentially they'd be sent a very big bill to cover the cost of those liabilities. So they don't just fall back to the fund, although with the new pass-through arrangement, the seeding employer, the liabilities just would fall back to the seeding employer. So if the council outsourced to Serco and Serco got rid of everyone, went bust, whatever, those liabilities and assets just fall straight back to the council. So we protect the fund in that way, that it's the seeding employer that has that responsibility for that relationship with its outsourced contractor.
Thank you, I think you answered the question and it's unlikely, you know, is it in frequency, we say at the best of times, perhaps not something to worry about. And what you're saying is, in the majority of circumstances, the fund is protected and there's no liabilities that we pick up in the majority of cases at least, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Can bring you back then to the recommendation on one oh nine. It's in two parts, obviously, we've discussed the report and considered whether any further information is required. However, we need to now vote on approving the funding strategy statement and the twenty twenty-two valuation report. Mark? Please?
Sorry to be difficult. Has there been any discussions at all or any comments made about pension holidays from the employers? Bearing in mind that the pension fund itself is in a very strong position. And I'm not totally sure whether it's even possible to do that in a LGPS scheme. Certainly happened when I was in the private sector with dire consequences, I should point out.
Yeah, no, it's not something we would allow. What we have done within the funding strategy statement is set, even if an employer were to be a hundred and fifty percent funded, we have set a minimum contribution level of ten percent that an employer will have to pay exactly because of that reason that happened way back when. So, yeah, we have that covered.
I'll come back to the second part of our recommendation then, is to approve the FSS and the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two valuation report. Could I have a proposal, first of all, please? That's Mark, seconded by councillor Bob Waller. All those in favour, please show. That's unanimous, thank you very much. And thank you, Joe. Moving on then to item eleven, which is the Lincolnshire Pension Fund Policies Review, and that's back to you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So this is the annual policy review of the key policies of the fund. So this covers the communication policy, admin strategy, governance policy, compliance statement, breaches reporting policy, code of conduct and conflicts of interest policy. The funding strategy statement I've just discussed, so that isn't within this report. And the investment strategy statement will be brought to the committee later this year once we've agreed what the new strategy will be going forwards. Stewardship Code itself was also brought to the committee in December, so that isn't covered here. We have just made amendments to one of those policies and that's the governance policy and compliance statement, and I've attached that at appendix A. This sets out the arrangements for the management of the fund and the compliance statement sets out how we meet the best practice requirements there. I've set out the changes in paragraph three, but in summary, these are just the additional co-opted member for the academy sector, updating the role of the committee following the changes in the constitution... updating the role of the committee following the changes in the constitution that went in December, updating the structure of the committee meetings following the changes there. And then obviously updating throughout the document where there's any reference to those points. The other policies haven't been amended amended, but I have included the link in there should committee members wish to refresh their memory of those policies. And the committee are then asked just to approve the updates to that governance, compliance and policy statement. So I'll happily take any questions. Thank you.
Questions? None seen. Thank you, Jo. Well, bring you back then to the recommendation is that the committee discuss and consider report and approve the fund's governance policy and compliance statement. So we're asking to approve, can I have a proposer, please? Councillor Tom Smith, seconded by councillor Bob Waller. All those in favour, please show. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. That's passed. Thank you, Jo. And moving on to item twelve, which again is back to you, Jo.
Thank you. So this paper brings the annual business plan to the committee for approval and it's been attached at Appendix A. This sets out the objectives of the fund, some statistics on our funding level and cash flow, the resources and the budget, which has been profiled as requested previously. It also shows the task for the year ahead and a look back at what we'd put in the business plan last year to show the progression there. And then we also have a forward plan of the meetings. So there's been a lot of work done over the last year and generally progress on the key tasks has been good. Where tasks haven't progressed as we would have hoped, this has generally been out of the team's control. We've added two new tasks to the business plan for the year. The first one, as mentioned earlier, is the review of the committee's requirements for independent advice following the publication of the Good Governance Review and taking any appropriate action we need to to implement that. And the second is a call-off from the National Framework for Custody Services as our current custodians' contract ends at 31st of March 2024. We'll bring to the committee any updates and outcomes from those tasks for consideration and approval as required. And the forward plan at the end just sets out the expected meeting agendas for the coming year. But it is flexible and any additional papers or training will be added as required. I'll happily take any questions on that. Thank you.
Questions, committee? Yes, Mark.
I don't have any problems fundamentally with the report or your or the attachment in terms of the business plan itself. I just wondered what happens if something occurs during the course of twenty-three, twenty-four that we need to react to? And 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 the reason why I was having these thoughts was obviously yesterday and the budget speech and all the all the issues associated with AVC limits and, sorry, with, you know, lifetime allowances and annual allowances and so on. And I'm not totally sure whether there are effects within the Lincolnshire Pension Fund in relation to that. There may well be, I suppose, because, you know, whilst local government offices rarely breached the, apparently rarely breached the current lifetime allowance, there are probably some people that may well be in a position where they are at the moment. And there may well be some ramifications as a consequence of the changes.
Yeah, I mean, we, the 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 business plan, we bring it back to the committee as an update in the December meeting. So but the the workflow, it's always flexible. There's always things coming in. Another announcement in about the budget was on the pooling side as to whether potentially there might be some more consolidation, having to pool all listed assets. So it it's permanently evolving and we will evolve that and evolve our work plan as required and bring things to committee as and when needed. Just on the the allowances, I think that comes in for twenty-four, five, so for next April, I think. But that would just be an update required to to the system and communications out, which we'd work with West Yorkshire to do once we get more detail on it.
Right, so fundamentally, we can handle it without too much of a problem. And and you you have my sympathy because the government can't leave pensions alone, can they? They can always tinkering with them.
Thank you for that. Yes, it would be good if we had a permanent minister for pensions instead of the constant moving around. But Tom.
Yeah, thanks. I was going to ask Jo about the pensions team itself. Considering you've got three billion to manage, seems four members of staff seems quite, I don't know, low. I don't know if we benchmark the amount of staff we've got with other pension funds.
Yeah, we are a a very small team for the the work that we do, but what we've been looking at, we had approval from the committee last year or the year before, actually, I think it was, to recruit an additional member to the team. Unfortunately, we were not successful with what we were looking for. So we are looking at changing that to bring a career-grade post in. But what we will also do is we've, having had discussions, I think actually there is a requirement for two posts. The the workloads have continued to increase and our requirements are only increasing going forward, particularly on the monitoring side, on the reporting side. So to ensure that we can, you know, the employer numbers have have mushroomed over the last few years as well, which is a huge area of work. So we'll be bringing a request back to the committee probably in the summer to get that second post. So we're we're just looking at now what those potential requirements are and perhaps two similar posts. But we can split various aspects of admin and accountancy and investments and stewardship to to build some more resilience in the team. I think that that's one of the key areas, the, we we have a lack of resilience in the team should some of those buses come along. So it is something that we're very aware of. As for benchmarking against other funds, it's very difficult because they're all managed very differently. Kind of Claire and I are kind of jack-of-all-trades, whereas some funds will have someone that specifically looks after accounting, someone that specifically looks after investments, et cetera, and some have got a cast of thousands. So it it is very difficult to benchmark because it's what suits the management of that fund. So it's something we're very aware of and hopefully we'll be bringing something back in the summer to to request some additional resorts and hopefully be able to appoint suitable people later this year.
Happy, Tom? Thank you, Jo. Any other questions? None seen, so bring you back to two hundred and seven, the recommendation. It's not only that the committee note the report, but to approve the Lincolnshire Pension Fund Business Plan for 2023, 24. Can I have a proposer, please? Councillor Tom Smith, secondary Steve Larter, all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you, Jo, for your report. We can move on to item thirteen then and hand over to Claire.
Thank you. The report today covers the preparation of the pension fund accounts and timings for the year ended 31st of March 2023. The report also brings an update from the external auditor on the 2122 audit and their planning for the 2223. Their actual audit strategy memorandum for 2223 was not ready in time for this meeting, so will be presented to the committee at the meeting in July. The report recommends that the committee invite John Presley from Mazars to attend that meeting to present the report. In terms of preparation of the accounts, there have not been any changes to the accounting standards, all the guidance set out in the Code of Practice for Pension Funds. So the accounts and therefore the accounting policies for 2223 will remain largely the same as last year. There are two key dates for publishing pension fund information. The first of these comes from the Regulation 34 in the LGPS Administration Regulations, and it's for publishing the annual report. And this is required to be done by the first of December each year. And this is in line with the requirements that we saw last year. The Accounts and Audit Regulations 2015 require just the accounts element to be prepared and published in draft with the county council's accounts for public inspection by the 31st of May. And this date has been moved earlier in the year than was seen for the previous years, twenty-one, sorry, 2021 and 2122, where account was taken of pressures such as the Covid pandemic and that deadline had been extended. In terms of the accounts preparation, we do not see or anticipate any issues with achieving either of these deadlines. The external auditor has provided an update on the 2122 audits. And as you can see from their report, they've completed all of their work and expect to give an unqualified opinion at the same time as the county council, and we've already touched on that earlier in the meeting. Mazars are currently reviewing the infrastructure assets within the county council's accounts and will give an opinion on on both sets of accounts when this has been concluded. For the 2223 audit, the external auditor expects to keep their materiality and their significant risks similar to those seen for 2122. That is, materiality at one percent and significant risks being management override controls and the valuation of unquoted assets. Their report also sets out the timelines and expectations for their audit work, of which some is already planned to be completed beyond the statutory audit sign-off deadline at the end of September. And it's because of this that we would propose that the audit committee invite the external auditor to the July meeting to present their audit memorandum and also to explain the work that they'll complete and the timings of that. And I'm very happy to take any questions on the report.
Questions, committee? Yes, Mark.
It does seem as though we're going to struggle to complete the timetable, though.
In terms of the timetable, which is set for us preparing accounts, we will comply with that. In terms of those statutory dates which are set for the external auditor, they are beyond our control. But yes, it doesn't appear that they will be meeting those in September.
No, it was the external auditor and final sign-off. And because it's, as I said, the problems that we had for the year that's just gone or the reports that's just gone will continue to apply.
And and that's why I would suggest that the committee would like to see John Presley with the strategy, who can maybe elaborate some more on that and explain what they're thinking and their planning is for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? None seen, so thank you very much, Claire. We'll move to the recommendations on two two five, four parts to it, three to note and one to approve. And note the changes required to the Statement of Accounts from the Code of Practice 2022, 23. Note the changes to the Accounts and Audit Regulations 2015. Approve the Statement of Accounting Policies, Appendix A, for use in preparing the local government pension scheme, LGPS, pension fund accounts for the financial year ending 31st of March 2023. And to note the update from the external auditor and invite them to the committee meeting in July to present their audit strategy memorandum. Can I have a proposer, please, first of all? Councillor Tom Smith, secondary, please. Councillor Mark Allen, those in, all in favour, please show. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item fourteen, which is consideration of exempt information. In accordance with section 100A4 of the Local Government Act in 1972, the following agenda items have not been circulated to the present public on the grounds that they are considered to contain exempt information as defined in paragraph three of Part One of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. The present public may be excluded from the meeting for the consideration of this item of business. Tom, if you could confirm when the present public have left, we will move on. Thank you.